I doubt that we can read this down. I just doubt it. It does, does, like, in my old room. It turns out. I don't know if it was. People say that it's incredible. They're like, they're taking it out to the holiday, maybe. And they said they bought it at National Park. And they said they also gambled out some of their presents. They passed it to the public. Because you know they're coming out, they're going to come out with all of ours. A little, a little flap or whatever. But there's, there's. And they said they bought it at National Park. And they said they also gambled out some of their presents. They passed it to the public. Because you know they're coming out, they're going to come out with all of ours. A little, a little. They're like, they're like. But they're, they're. They're sitting in the socks. And they're like, oh, they're like, oh, they're like. This is, this is. I. 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 But it's like that salary. He's a janitor. He's lucky here. And they did so much work. And it's crazy. Absolutely crazy. Absolutely crazy. Yeah. I was cracking jokes. I was cracking jokes. Yeah. I got that part. I'm like, yeah. Yeah. It's like, no, no. Yeah. It's a good job. It's a good job. Yeah. Well. Wow. I got. It's from the screen now. It's like, oh, it's like, oh, it's like. That's fantastic. 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 We have to light it up. We need to get it up. We need to be off. We have to break back home. We're leaving.
I'll let you know. I'll let you know. I mean, if we're just. The judge is here. Swearing in this evening. I have a couple of questions for helping. No.
So, um, if anyone is in court house, I apologize because I missed some remarks and I want to repeat some of what I said. Because I think it's important. Um, and I think a lot of us realize in these times especially, it is very important that we have good people dedicated to public service. And it's my honor to sworn in some good people. I've just sworn in some good people in Dr. Barrow. I've got to swear in a good person here in Morrisville Barrow. And then I swear in some good people in Moore Mcfield. So, um, it's really not privileged to do that. So, you ready? You guys ready? So, please repeat after me. I am Dave Vravella.
I, Dave Vravella.
Duesomely swear.
Duesomely swear.
And I will support. Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth.
And of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
You guys ready?
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
The others made is who swears is correct. So, if you come up.
Steve, do you want the microphone?
Yeah.
They don't want me to touch them.
I know. It's true.
We can hear them. You can't hear me so quiet.
You have to be loud. I know you can do it.
Yeah, David.
I, Corinne Chronicle.
Duesomely swear.
Duesomely swear.
To support.
To support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend. The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution. And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And I would discharge.
And I would discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Do we have a list who wants to go next?
Well, we have new, new, uh, council people, so I don't know who wants to be next, but please feel free to come up and, and get sworn in.
Duesomely swear. Duesomely swear. That I will support. That I will support. Obey and defend. Obey and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And I would discharge the duties. And I would discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity. Of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
I, I. That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I would discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity. Exactly.
I, Justin R. Bowers.
Duesomely swear.
Duesomely swear.
And I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity. Congratulations.
Doesn't look like it. Okay. All right. All right. Well, congratulations, everyone. How about we rise for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, infinite, ever and ever.
Well, I don't have.
Anyone have it for a roll call? Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, Virginia passed it down.
Okay. The mayor is present. Uh, Mr. Yeager?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Ms. Chronicle?
Here.
Mrs. Larison?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Pepitone?
Here.
Mrs. Drysback?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. May I, at this time, have nominations for the President of Borough Council?
I nominate Debbie Smith.
Okay, we have a nomination. I would think, uh, vote is in order.
You have to ask three times.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Moved by Danielle. Seconded by. Justin. Okay. Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysback?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries eight to zero. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to have a nomination for Vice President.
I nominate Danielle Larison.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Mrs. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
And Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries eight to zero. Congratulations. And at this time, I'd like to turn the gavel over to your new Borough Council President.
Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda is going to be the actual reorganization part of the, and we're going to do the appointments. Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, mhm. No. Oh, you didn't do the, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we forgot. Oh, okay, the mayor didn't do the pro tem. I'm sorry, we're going to do a pro tem this time. So, under reorganization, under five C is a nomination for the President, pro tem.
I nominate Justin Bowers.
Second.
Okay, we have Justin Bowers and a second. Do a, uh, roll call on that, please. That's going to be.
Can we just get a quick explanation as to what exactly that is?
A pro tem? Um, a pro tem is if, uh, if something would happen to the President or Vice President, the pro tem is that third person in line. It's, um, it's something that we didn't do, but we could have done. There wasn't, uh, one time where we did actually need the pro tem. So, it's just a safety measure to put that in.
Is that something we have to add to our code or anything? Because it's not in ours.
No, no, it's in the borough code. Yeah, I actually got that from the PSCB website also, which recommended.
It's not in Morrisville's borough code, I mean.
Uh, state, state borough code.
Okay. I was just curious.
Thank you. Okay, so if we can do a roll call on that, please. Um. Hold on a second. Oh, sorry, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Arlene Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Bowers, you are the pro tem. That passed eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda are the appointments. First one on the appointment is six A, a motion to appoint interim Borough Manager slash Borough Secretary slash Open Records Officer. May I have a nomination?
I nominate Scott Mitchell.
Okay. Is there any of the nominations? Is there any of the nominations? Okay, we'll do a roll call on that, please. Uh, that would be for Scott Mitchell as our interim Borough Manager slash Borough Secretary slash Open Records Officer. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. That passes six two. Congratulations, Mr. Mitchell. You are now the pro interim manager. Jessica Conover. Just me and Justin.
I will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is six B. Hope everybody can hear me. A motion to appoint Assistant Borough Secretary. Can I have a nomination, please?
Virginia Cypher's.
Virginia Cypher's. Is there any of the nominations? Is there any of the nominations? Okay, then that vote, that motion is to appoint, uh, Virginia Cypher's as the Assistant Borough Secretary. We'll have a roll call on that. Um, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations to Virginia Cypher's. And that passed eight to zero. Motion six C is a motion to appoint the Borough Treasurer. Can I have a nomination, please?
I nominate Joan Doreto.
Joan Doreto. Any of the nominations? Is there any of the nominations? Okay, then we'll take a roll call on that for Joan Doreto for the appointment for Borough Treasurer. And the roll call, please, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations to Joan Doreto. As our Borough Treasurer. And next motion on the agenda is a motion to appoint the Assistant Borough Treasurer. Can I have a nomination, please?
Nancy Doreto.
Thank you. Any of the nominations? Is there any of the nominations? Okay, so the nomination would be for Nancy Doreto as our Assistant Borough Treasurer, and we'll do a roll call on that. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations to Nancy Doreto as our Assistant Borough Treasurer. Next motion on the agenda is a motion to appoint our Borough Solicitor. Can I have a nomination, please?
I nominate Flagler and Associates.
Okay. Is there any of the nomination? Any of the nomination? Okay, that's a motion then to appoint Flagler and Associates as our Borough Solicitor. And we'll do a roll call on that, please. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations to Flagler and Associates, our Borough Solicitor. Geez, all right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was like always.
Okay, um, the next motion on the agenda is a motion to appoint the Borough Engineer. Can I have a, uh, nomination for that, please?
Gilmore Associates.
Thank you. Is there any of the nominations? Any of the nominations? Okay, then the nomination is for Gilmore and Associates as the Borough Engineer. We'll do a roll call on that, please. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Congratulations to Gilmore and Associate as our Borough Engineer. Six G is a motion to appoint Special Counsel. Can I have a motion for that, please? I mean, a nomination, I'm sorry for that.
I wish to nominate Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hapell.
Get that spelling. Is there any other nominations for that? Any of the nominations?
Just really quickly, this was also an addition. Can we get an explanation for this as well?
Um, yes, uh, um, there's a lot of places that do nominations for, um, adding extra engineers or extra attorneys, uh, whether it be for, if you need them for Special Counsel, uh, labor or anything else that you would need. You don't use them unless you have to use them, but it's, it's always easier to do at the time that you're reorganizing if you're going to do it. Uh, I know some townships have like three or four engineers according to what they're going to be using it for.
So, you don't have, we don't have any specific reason, specific designation for this Special Counsel?
Well, I think it's a good thing to have on staff. We have several contracts and things coming up, so if we do need extra, um, legal, yeah.
I just, I'm, I'm not sure if I understand the difference between the Solicitor and the Counsel. Is that, or is the Special Counsel something that's going to be spelled out?
You can use them for, like I said, special, special labor if you have, if, let's say, uh, Mr. Flagler's firm isn't able to handle several things at one time and you need to bring in an extra Counsel, we'd be able to do that. You can, you can vote or not vote for it, Ms. Chronicle.
No, I've just never, I don't, I'm just asking for what this is.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what that's for.
If we need it, we need it, I'm not.
Yeah, and you could do it another time, it's just, it was chosen to do it at the reorganization.
Because it's new, so that's why I was just asking for an explanation.
Yes, it is. Yes. Okay. Okay, can we do a, uh, roll call on that, please?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. Okay, congratulations to Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hapell as our Special Counsel. Um, six H is a motion to appoint the Borough Building Inspector slash Zoning Officer slash Fire Inspector slash Code Enforcement Officer.
I nominate Keystone Municipal Services.
Is there any of the nominations? Is there any of the nominations? Okay, then we will do a roll call for Keystone Municipal Services, Inc., I believe it is, to be the, um, Borough Building Inspector slash Zoning Officer slash Fire Inspector slash Code Enforcement Officer. A roll call on that, please. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Uh, Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. That passes six to two. Congratulations to Keystone and Associates. Um, Keystone Municipal, I'm sorry. At this time, I'd like to open the, uh, hearing of the public. I don't know if anyone has signed up, but you would just like to come to the podium and say something?
A sheet?
Is there a sheet there to someone sign? Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. Um, Nancy Sherlock, would you like to come to the podium?
Comment, comments already. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Mayor newly elected, and those have been already seated. Uh, tonight is a night for celebration, and I do congratulate those who have been reelected, Mayor Dave Vravella and Corrine Chronicle, and also the newly elected Councilpersons, Ms. Drysback, Mr. Yeager, and Justin Bauer. And also, I'd like to mention, uh, as, uh, the judge mentioned earlier this evening, uh, the Row Offices in Bucks County were sworn in this eve, this morning, and that was Judy Reese, who's our new Prothonitory. We have Milton Warrell, our Sheriff, District Attorney Matthew Whiterop, uh, Controller Neil Docherty, and Recorder of Deeds Robyn Robinson. So, congratulations to them as well. Uh, just, this election did not turn out the way some had hoped, but, uh, I absolutely believe in the process, and I do believe that majority rules. So, congratulations to all. What I would like to mention, though, is the paper said that this is a four-four split, four Democrats, four Republicans. I'd just like to correct that because I do believe that two of our Republicans or two of our Democrats do not believe in the Democratic principles. So, uh, I'm not sitting down, it's my time to speak. I have the right to speak.
Point of, point of order. Is that, no, just a point of order, you can speak.
Thank you very much. Yes, I mean, I wasn't going to point out things this evening, but, uh, it, it seems that the crowd here doesn't believe it, so, uh, I mean, we have instances I'll bring up at another time because tonight's not the night to bring it up, but I can bring up certain things that both Ms., uh, Mrs. Drysback and Mr. Yeager, who are registered Democrats, excuse me. Anyway, um, there's been talk about outsourcing the public works. I would just like this Council to please consider, uh, doing such a thing if, um, I, I don't think that it's necessary. You have a small skeleton crew who's doing quite a bit as we speak. And also, these are people that live in town, pay taxes in town, have families in town, and, uh, I'd like you to certainly reconsider before you make any movement, uh, towards, uh, outsourcing that. Now, for some more moans and groans, uh, another thing I'd like to bring up is the event that took place on Friday, December 22nd, um, when, uh, Ms., Mrs. Smith came into the Borough Hall to speak to, um, Mr. Subey. It was during the, um, they have a small, uh, holiday gathering, and she asked to speak to him, and she had him in the office for about an hour and a half, I understand. And during that time, she told him that he would not need to come back, um, that he was done on the 31st of, uh, December. And, um, And so, while I... This is... There's so many things wrong with that. While it was... It was inappropriate. It was unprofessional. The timing is ruthless. Like, I don't understand the purpose behind coming in on the 22nd to tell him that. You can't just sweep the borough manager under the rug. That it should have been done in public, and you can't just make that decision and come in and tell him, "Don't come back," and also that we are planning on doing interim and we'll hire somebody in the future. Normally, your borough manager is the interim and works. That's not sort of the transition that should have taken place. So, I think that was... I just think it was absolutely inappropriate. I appreciate it. You know, I'm not going to talk when other people are talking, so it'd be nice if we didn't have these comments on the side. You may not like what I have to say, but what I have to say, a lot of it is actually the truth. You might not believe it, but it is the truth. I think the public needs to know, and I'm just here to tell them. The paper was wrong, okay? That's what I'm trying to tell you. The position of councilperson is one of honor, and I know that all of you are trying to do the best you can in your own particular way, but it's not about titles, it's not about power, it's about doing what's best for the health and the welfare of the borough. And I think I'll just end it with that because we have a very inappropriate audience here, and once again, the bar has been lowered. Thank you, have a good evening.
May I respond?
Is there... I was told I forgot my name and address. Nancy Sherlock, 424 West Bridge Street.
Thank you, Ms. Sherlock.
I'll wait for the eggs, apparently.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? The... I'm not even going to address those issues. This isn't the time and the place for it. This is a time for celebration of all the new appointed people that are up here, the people that are standing up here. So, I will leave it at that. I look forward to working with everyone. I believe they will with us. It's a new time for Marson. Let's move it forward and do some good things. I think we've got some good people up here. We're trying our best with it. If we make a mistake, believe me, the first ones admit it and correct that mistake. So, let's all get on that same path and do some good things. So, congratulations, everybody. Okay, now, if anyone else doesn't wish to speak, we'll continue with this. The next motion is under finance. It's a motion to adopt the resolution to obtain the bond for the interim manager in the amount of $100,000.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Okay, and if I could have a roll call on that, please. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Pepitone?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, yes. That passes six to two for the bonding for our interim manager at $100,000. Okay. At this point, it's under any other business. It would be any discussion by the borough officials if you would like to speak at this time.
Yeah, just real quickly, I would like to thank Mr. Subie for his time as our borough manager. He lowered taxes, and he did a great job moving a lot of projects forward that were stagnant. So, I would like to thank him for that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else, please?
Debbie, I'd just like to congratulate everyone tonight and look forward to working with everyone up here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Real quick, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out. It has been a contentious time. At this point, I'm very excited and so... I feel so good about the direction that this town's going to be going in, not just from the people that are on this dais, but from the people in our town that are so excited about the changes that are going to be made in this town. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, the only thing I will say is one of the remarks being made about outsourcing the public works, we're not outsourcing the public works, just to let you know, our work... Our borough workers work very hard, and we all know that. So, there isn't anything like that going on. We're just going to look at the best avenues for the best financially for the borough to get the services done and keep everybody employed and to do some good things for the town that need to be done. Okay? So, congratulations, everybody, and thank you all for coming out. We appreciate it. And at this point, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Oh, all favor say aye. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.